Alright, well, welcome everyone outside. Welcome our guests. Go ahead.
Ms. Kara Thomas, Mr. Jim Hendy, Mr. Kenny Anderson, Ms. Brooke Hewitt, Mr. Clay Cropper, Mr. Ron Byatt.
Here.
Alright, I cross this floor. All in attendance? Do you have a copy of the agenda in front of you? Is there anything that needs to be added to the agenda? If not, I'm going to take a motion to accept this presentation. Motion by fair to accept the agenda as presented is the second. Do you have a second? All in favor, show him. Alright, motion here. Do you have, if you had a chance to look through the minutes, or put those up, so you can have a look at it?
I don't know. I don't really care what happens about, was it any of them, anything to do with...
Oh, yes, in part.
Yeah, and what was that, what was I... I want to think, I think it was two things.
Two together, I thought it was something.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. I want to think of two things, because I don't have any chat, no one. I had one back in the...
The lower under three hundred. You know that, but I'm doing... Okay. Would I see anything changed? Change, is not correct? Not that they can't motion accept. Is there something? Motion accept by Sarah, is there a second? Second by Carissa, all in favor? Motion here. Alright, we'll kind of skip to the force chief. Do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Chief Kelton, I hear tonight he had another engagement. There was a water report, there's nothing to go into it, it's here, if you want to look at it. It presented, the water department, there's two sewer reports. They're for the same lift station, a few days, a few weeks apart. You will have to look, both of those are compliant, I'm not sure of the reason why, the two reports. One might be quarterly, and I'm not sure on that. Ken's not here. Those two reports are there. Barry, can you, do you have an update on the signs that you've ordered? Have you ordered those?
Yeah, I ordered them, and I called them a few weeks ago to check on them. The machine that they use to paint these things, something had broke on it, and they were backed up, and they hadn't got them yet. So I'm going to call back to you tomorrow or Wednesday, see what we have on that. But I do have them in there.
Okay, I had a conversation, Rick and I got together today, spent about an hour calling about the parking situation. There was a, since the parking lot has suspended its effect, he's had several issues out on Brentwood that he's addressed warnings for. And actually, one of the ones, one of the addresses that he had issued two warnings to uh, to uh, warning, they had moved the cars, they, actually, a bus struck one of the vehicles the other day. So, so we talked and we talked about that. We're going to get together, he wanted to get together with you, and go over some signs and some place versus stuff.
Okay.
He's still going door to door, asking these people, what are they doing on? You know, I, we're going door to door. However, you want to address it. I know somebody had said something about putting it in a newsletter, I'm not sure if you want to continue to do that. That would come out in two or uh, next week?
I need to go around to the...
Okay, so if you want to do that, you'll need to know that pretty quick, so we can get that news and that together. Because we have to print that at the same time we print a lot of this. Or if you want to go door to door, I'd find it here. I think we do the newsletter.
I don't know, even if I do, I'm like, if I'm really, like, hitting on the other door, or even like, you know, you have a lot of the thing.
I know Chief Kelton here tonight, we talked about today, he wanted to use an abundance of uh, uh, what do you think? A caution, but discretion is the word he used. A little people understand what's going on, but the two, the two issues or warnings that he had issued, he told them the second time, the third time, they would be cited and towed. Hadn't been the very next day, a school bus hit their car, so it was out, and I haven't been parked back, parked back out in the street since, so, you know, I think he's wanting to use discretion.
Was that Brentwood, what's...
It's 305 Brentwood.
305 Brentwood.
Well, I mean, I, like, I, I don't hear, I don't hear that, I just can't hear it. So, not everybody's thinking, huh, but more logical, uh, to get the information, probably than to be like, putting something that they're doing, having, um, whatever.
Okay, well, whichever way...
I don't think it'd be a bad idea to bring in other officers, to say, that if you decide to go just to the rest of the subdivision, this affects all the other addresses too. Unless you want to go hit every home in the city, the rest of the...
Brian, was, was there an article on that?
No, yeah.
What they did.
I had also, I think, got a news that called me, and also, they're talking about the snow removal and winter. And I also mentioned to them to put in their article about parking on the street during any type of snow removal. Not just a snow emergency, but any kind of radical assault. Don't know how many people read it and figure.
Alright, so we'll get, I'll get more as we can. We'll get something through the newsletter, if you guys want to do door to door, if you want to use the same handout, we do the removals, the parking laws, uh, more, uh, we do. Nothing for parks, Brent plan, is that it?
Uh, just the, could you, where the justice team is canceled, that's right, this month. Apparently, the developer is working on it.
Alright, so that meeting is being canceled?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything to say?
No, sir.
Okay. Under ABC, we did have a new application this past week, it's sixty-five Broadway, Sweet Beach, and all the information is there for that, if you want to take a look at that. Under the mayor's report, the audit, I wanted to mention, we couldn't get the audit for tonight's meeting. Expect an email from me sometime right after Thanksgiving, once we have the draft of the audit, I'll email that to you. We will have that at the next meeting, first meeting in December. The auditors will be here to be able to answer questions, and I'll get back as soon as they send the draft to me, and I'll forward it on to you. If you have any questions, definitely take a look through it, cabinet questions, the auditors will be here on the next meeting, which is first meeting in December, to answer any questions. The, we, the, there was a safety meeting last week, the insurance adjuster was in. One of the biggest things that I just wanted to touch on was all the participation from all department heads. A lot of the things that we've started and put into place over the last couple of years have started to pay dividends, I don't, don't hold me on the exact numbers, but I'd have to get with the safety committee, get that exact number, but if, if one is the baseline for our workers' compensation insurance, if one is the baseline, like, the average of what everybody would pay, we had been paying, three years ago, which was our last audit, we were paying one point nine. So we were paying almost just what the normal was because of the claims and workers' comp and things like that. We're actually down to a point eight right now, so we're actually paying less than what the average is. So, those have been in response to the different programs that we've put into place, but that saves us several thousand dollars a year in insurance for the workers' comp. But I just wanted to thank all the staff, citywide, for doing the work. The DRE November newsletter, they sent it to me, I just included it here, here's a printed copy if you want to look at it. It's just the information they typically send out every, every couple of months, just about what's going on at the elementary school. And I just wanted to remind everyone, Country Christmas is next, it's Saturday, it's September first, um, from four to seven thirty, yeah, four thirty to seven thirty. Just wanted to remind everybody about that. That's all I had in my report, so, since it's no old business, we need a motion to go into executive session, KRS sixty-one eight ten, section C, litigation, pending litigation. Motion by Jim, is there a second? Second by Ron, all in favor? Alright. We will adjourn, we'll be back in just a few minutes.
I'm doing it. I'm doing it. Power or, power or, whoever. I have to, to mitigate my pain. I want to get out of the bathroom.
Who's having a time with that? Put them on a string tied around your little finger, huh?
I don't know, people have favorite things, it's very hard to come up with.
I did. I kept getting home, and her son gets back, and she always keeps her yard up. And I thought, she's probably aggravated with that. So, I keep up, and she's like, you don't have to come and do this today, it's cold. And I said, okay, if I can do any better though, it's either now or never, so, I didn't know what big of a yard it was, and so, and it was like... It's a big yard, yeah. It's a big yard, and she was fine, and I brought some exercise too, and I kind of get out, and she's bored out of mine, but you gotta die. Yeah, it, um...
I hope you appreciate the tone.
Oh, she's such a doll, too, she's such a good neighbor. And I'm trying to, the little neighbors all across the street, so I'm trying to get her to help out, we've got to tell them they need to get, get back in check. It takes about four moles to get the weeds, it's just, all those big trees, they all drop at different times. Yeah, and it's such a mess, and so, I'm trying to get the little girl on the street to help out, but I don't get any help. But yeah, I got out there. She was ill, and Molly had had a flu, and we shut up, we couldn't...
No, I didn't do well, but, uh...
But she had, 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 she had,[1376.81]
I think you're being very.
You're a baby. So, I was looking at you.
Is our fire department coming? Is our police department coming? Is our school system coming? Am I? Well.
You don't say more than four.
Look, look.
You don't over.
No. You fellas, you don't have. No, I don't.
I can't imagine anybody with, with children and, and growing up and all that at the very least. Just wants, wants us to make a socialist country.
Did you put that in front of you?
I just cannot say that.
No? Um, so.
Take my, take my money and give us the person that just sits on the red ass and doesn't do nothing.
Like a.
Good question.
Like.
Where am I?
Are there, no, I want, I want to be killed very often.
No, not often.
What, Jeff, is that?
Very thing.
Exactly, I have no idea. But working with.
Remember, that's what.
I'm hearing all these things.
You're the right law.
Barry.
They're, um, I'm doing okay for myself.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing I, I mean, I've never had Highview do one for me. But, um, I'm taking one to Harman's over in. Some forty-five.
Yeah.
And, uh.
It's all kind of, yeah.
And, uh.
I, I had one done over there, they done a good job.
Yeah.
I mean.
They're just a little bit cheaper than Highview. Highview wants to charge fifty-five dollars an hour plus gas to kill it. And then it's seven cents a pound for packaging. Harman's was thirty-five dollars to kill two. Of course, I'm taking it over there.
Uh, I thought I done too, we took a couple over there, another ten pounds.
Fifty cents a, fifty cents to rap it, nothing, sixty or sixty-five to back them.
Yeah, I can't remember, he gave me a little bit better price, we took two over every time.
Yeah.
Took them over there and.
But I, the first one I took over Harman's, they, they did all right, I mean, I didn't have a problem with them. I just didn't know if he knew of anybody else. Ray, Ray's, Ray loves Highview. He said that guy's got a really clean place in there and said he does a good job.
Up the man down there at the, Wall Street, uh.
Oh, uh, Beattie?
Beattie, thank you. Uh, I hear a lot of good things about him, I never taken none there.
He's not doing anymore.
Well, okay.
He's real sick.
He sold his property.
Yeah.
He had it for sale, yeah.
Yeah, cause I, I saw him in the bank where he said that, he came with the whole processing process.
Yeah.
Gee, and he's another year.
I think he was, I think he was real sick, I don't know.
I've heard that too, his wife's so done.
Yeah.
His wife was trying to keep up with him as she could and he was so bad.
Uh, I don't know if he, I don't know what kind of sickness he had, but I, I don't, yeah, he's not down there anymore.
Hmm, I don't know that, I talked to him also. Yeah, that's a, I don't remember Highview. Couple months. I think it was until two, I should.
The only thing I don't know about Highview is they, they don't kill there, do they, do they come to your place and kill? Okay. I didn't know if he could take one there. I never did ask him.
Sure. Uh, from my point of view. Well, I.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
You know, I just have to go to my family.
I told the kid. I told the kid we get my beef for Christmas.
Yeah.
And they go, we're gonna hunt, you buy the freezer too? I said, uh, no, I'm getting a beef.
That sounds like it, I figured that problem out.
That's what I said.
I'm giving you several hundreds or maybe thousands of dollars.
You blew right here.
You know, we. We buy your freezer.
And you're paying for the processing, that's another. You know, two hundred and fifty, or however big the cow is, but.
I come up and bring the deals. You fill a freezer, they can buy freezer.
Yeah.
I've been a freezer all the time. Supposed to go, I got my half way here. Thirty?
They find a freezer on, on that Facebook Marketplace pretty reasonable.
I bought one down there. Uh, we'd buy a big freezer. Start that one.
Yeah.
For, I mean, two or three years. We bought it there, uh, that's there along seventy-five. Can you see it when you get off there at the, uh, front connected down on the right?
Yeah.
Uh, before you get, you know, like. The, all that stretch up there, uh, I couldn't know what's the name of the place to call. It'd be about a hundred and twenty-five bucks.
Yeah.
You know, we didn't have a big one, I thought, well, yeah, I figured I could put stuff in. Put half beef in, something like that kind of deal, you know.
I, I was, uh, on that twenty-two. Uh, this was, just back in spring. I seen a sign sitting out in yards, just. Almost right across from where John Sowdick's moved house. It said estate sale.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Good.
Oh, that's okay. And, uh, so I stopped and I said, what y'all got? And they're like, this lady, this girl said, my mom's run down a rest home and was trying to sell stuff and. And, uh, they had all kinds of stuff in the garage, like some tools and blah, blah, blah. I said, well, what do you want for this? And she's like, honestly, she said, just pay it, get it out of here. Just water hoses, I mean, this, this stuff. And I said, what else, I said, anything else you could. I do have a refrigerator and freezer downstairs. I said, what you say? She said, yeah, I'll sell it. And so she took me down to show it to me. Of course, it looked like brand new. I said, what do you want for it? She said, for which one? I said, for both of them. And, uh, she's like, I don't know, she said, that's fifty bucks. And I'm like, I said, honestly, it's worth more than I said, I'll give you seventy-five. I said, I'll take them. So, I went home, got the trailer, went loading them up. And, uh, I put the freezer out in the garage and I put the refrigerator downstairs. And heck, it looked like brand new, but they're probably, they're probably twenty years old, twenty-five years old, but they're in good shape.
Years ago, my grandmother, well, the first refrigerator she ever owned, it was an International, okay? She lived over in, in, goes out. When her husband died, she died. Sixty-seven, fifty-eight.
Nine, nine, Saturday.
She moved, but she moved in. The apartment's up here in the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
But she lived in three years. And then she moved in with us, when she moved in with us, we brought her refrigerator to the farm, their turn. So, like now, could've put, put us stuff like that. So, when I left the farm, it turned, asked God if he wanted. He said, sure, he took it, he took it over there and put it in his strip room. Right? I worked with the whole town, with the whole town. Yep, just stayed in the strip room there for probably.
Check on her and do something.
I think the five or six years.
Yeah.
And finally, it went kaput, I think we got it so gummed up with dust and stuff, I mean.
Right.
I mean, it worked the entire time.
Really?
That'd be like eighty years old now.
You never find another one like that.
Now, you're, now you're having a meal, me?
Yeah. Mom had an old, uh.
Around twelve thirty, twelve thirty.
I think it was a, I don't know if it was Maytag or Whirlpool freezer in the basement. She lived down there in Old House. I mean, it was. Yeah, a pre-stored freezer, but man, that thing worked like a charm. Had it for years, she lived there fifty-four years. Had it, bought it when she moved in there, when her dad moved in.
What color was it?
White.
White?
Yep.
Dad had green one, about, about green jacket, says he got rid of about five years ago.
Really?
And, uh, the house that Dad's, uh, Mama's house.
Yeah.
And Mama and Papa called about that that. Well, it was green if that was anything, cause I don't know what decade that would have been, but then. But, uh, when he moved in, within the past ten years, it's been. Well, in the past five years, people.
Yeah, it is.
So, did you know Mama and Papa's house freeze that now?
It is white, yes, they owned it in fifty-two.
I didn't know that.
They owned it in fifty-two, and, uh, Papa has his shop there on, um, twenty-five, where you pull for the bank. Um, that spot, right where you pull in the bank, was exactly where his shop's at.
Huh.
And so, uh, he had that shop there up till he was getting married, he had his zima.
Yeah.
Um, he started smoking as an army, he had a gun, he was from the army. And the army said, now smoke that off cigarettes or open up your airways.
That's right.
Yeah, open up your airways and, uh, never was a smoker till then.
Huh.
Oh, that was part of your ashes, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, and so they don't look on their own cigarettes. And, uh, from that point on, the lung issues never helped her.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
You know, but. And he was, he was there, I don't know when he had his shop down, but.
Oh, God.
Mama, oh my God, yeah, you were a love.
Did your dad ever sell that building you had down there?
Yeah, I forgot that.
He tried to sell it to me and I'm like, I don't know how to do this thing, I mean, it's, it's big. Yeah, but. Yeah, I said, how am I gonna move that? Oh.
Where are you putting that? But, I mean, my God, that, that lot has always been a, a, a lot in the yard.
They were so good.
It's a good spot to have something, you would have a.
I work.
I know this. And you put here with the middle. I'm like. Mom, I know this.
My son, my son. And you're.
This is a good one.
Yeah.
Don't worry.
We had a little more trouble with it. I was like, I don't know. You were so passionate.
He was a servant there.
You didn't have to, I didn't do that before.
There were one tab.
I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't.
See, I'm thinking, I'm gonna.
Move.
Exactly.
All right, you're not, you're gonna go back.
No, not the you, but the only.
You say something, there's a little bit. What a part, it's a dollar, five, dot, dot. I mean, I'm not starting, you start, you're on number.
Yeah.
I'm done. I mean, I, I took off, I took off.
Oh.
Sherman's always hard over, never lost a shield.
I'm not sure, really.
Never lost a shield off that.
How many, how many of them gone on the roll back?
Put it down, you have water around it.
Drug it back up on.
Put, put things down, it got right in the water.
It's fine. It falls off, don't stop.
It's nothing, don't stop, I ain't stopping. Not that.
And stay together.
It's probably built better than somehow, you're like, ah, it's all fine.
The new building we have in our backyard, uh, we could probably hit some roads, one promise to, to look like that. Just one. I don't even know how you show that, and they're in the backyard and you're handing it to me, I was like, there you go.
Really?
Like, do you need any help? No, it's all done. Levelled it out and everything. Back to.
They got that stuff there.
No. They do.
Tell them later.
And it's, it was really nice building, Josh, you know, they did a research on it.
You know, I don't know, I don't, I haven't been there lately.
Enough to X amount of ways from their facility, and we were like five miles to be announced. But the work that they did, it's phenomenal, and prices that we go.
Yeah.
Um, our other building, the, the roof went straight after.
Well, I don't want to. Let them go down here all day.
Well, they're pictures of the property from the forty.
They got per acre in there.
So, I don't know then, uh, when it was actually built. But, uh, yeah, one, one guy delivered it. Always an ounce and, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Most of them, if you, if you're in that business, they'll deliver them.
About fifty-four.
You just got one car, I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
Hell County.
It was out there.
Stanton.
But you don't see much of us.
Stanton, that was, that was where I was.
Yeah, Stanley, good.
Oh, really?
No, it's out there, isn't it? I mean, we're in the delivery range. It's a free delivery.
Oh, my gosh. I had a, I bought, my parents bought TV, we moved in the shop. It was called the calling button, nineteen seventy-two.
Two months to.
We had it out here, we needed out, and I had a server to stay in that house forever.
You were, you were.
I left that, I took it with me to my house, sure. In the back room, yeah. Very lean, and I was like, what's the wrong with it? I said, you get three, like, the wrong with it, I got it, you get the three. I had nothing to eat. I kept it, I think, twenty, twenty, fifty years old.
Yeah.
And I take it, why you got it on there? What's on with it, nothing, what's mine? I mean, it did, it's fine. I saw it real. I'm pretty sorry, man. I'm telling you. Happy for you, you don't, don't mind your smile, we got food. But I've been working, I mean, let's say, what, what, yeah. I don't know, anyway.
They don't make stuff like that anymore.
No, lose your cell phone, don't hang on.
I'll tell you a funny story. Uh, this girl's house in two thousand and two, I think it was, anyway. Uh, uh, Mary moved, moved next to us, I don't know, two thousand and five. Well, people were living in it, they were paying us, or whatever. But they could still get in the house, still have kids, the electric was still on, had, but.
Five months for.
Keep bad. My dishwasher quit working. I was talking to the guy who lived in there one day. And, uh, he'd stop by, winter out, but. I said, hey, I said, your dishwasher work? He's like, yeah, why? So, well, mine quit. He's still switching. I said, all right, so, I went in, and then I wanted dishwasher, and I told Tina, I said, hey. You gotta let me carry this across the yard, not a bunch of people seeing us, we're gonna get that other one and bring it over here. She's like, are you serious? And I'm like, yeah, he told me to get it. And, uh, so. Before I came inside, I went over there and did their dishwasher. Uh, he swapped them out and forth. And, uh, I thought, nobody's ever been out of his house, Scott Bates by it. I went over there, I said, Scott, I gotta tell you something. I said, don't turn your water heater nothing on until you get another dishwasher. He said, I already knew, he said, Jim told me you, I swapped them out. Tina's like, you shouldn't just went to all the mail. What Tommy's drive. Said, I did, and they say we're. Here we are running across the yard, carrying dishwasher, looking for anybody. Going by them, I don't. But, uh, I, I said, well. It's like, especially if you ask for, or if your refrigerator lasts for a while.
What's in the middle of that?
He said, oh, funny, it's boy.
Oh, my gosh.
Don't pass, he's driving that car, that thing is gonna do nothing either.
Here they come, worth his time.
It's fifty-five, you drive a speedo, that out there, you might as well get it slow a bit.
When Jared was in the hospital over in the bedroom. He was down there, saying, I mean. Said her dad, her dad had been there a little bit before. And she said. I wish, I'm like, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get somebody to. Trying to get somebody to drive him down there, always gonna hire, I don't know. He's a bit more mean than me and driving ten, or not doing fun, not applying, you know.
She doing right, come back, doing right.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
You're all good.
Mm.
I've been chatting with her today.
She's. He's, he's around going up there.
The seizure.
He's gonna go.
He's done that in years in a while.
What he's doing, he's doing something. Come back, go door, if I hear a tally, he's gonna be up, I'm gonna tell him.
Oh, it's, oh.
I didn't hear nothing, I couldn't see that dark around the other. Calm down, I, I'd lay down and get to it. Ooh, ooh.
What kind of dog is it?
Yeah, it's like, oh, what happened to her lung?
Big dog.
Make a lot of noise.
He used to be somebody little down south. I don't know if it was Ashford Road.
Mm-hmm.
I think it was Ashford Road, they had eight or nine of them things. They're pretty dogs. Mm-hmm.
Well, he's not, he's full of birds right now, man, he's just. He's got a bunch of them there all over.
Need a lot.
You know, he could, he's what I give him, sir. There you go.
That's why my lab is, always her kids, what I give him, and that's it. I think he'd eat the house down, too.
It's a ten. He would probably.
He's a super, super good dog, he's old, he's fourteen years old, he's a good dog. He was easy. He was easy to train, you know, just. He knew where his boundaries were and, and just a good dog, so.
We, we got this one when I first got him, you know, still, something, right? She got a little porch, you know. She put the porch and come in.
Right.
Homebody, they come in the house, that's what he stays.
Mm-hmm.
Then the woman got get up, and I was looking, he's outside, and he's got, he's getting in the house.
Really?
And he's standing in the house, huh? He's outside, and, you know. He's a little doggy man.
Yeah, I've, we done that, well, when I was growing up, we had a dog in the house. At the time, I thought it was a school, but I look back and I'm like, man, it's hair everywhere. Smell like a dog, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. I have a. I have a.
And I'm the same, I was just, yeah, yeah, obviously, it's just different places and different times, to try to help the people come, you know. Well, yeah, I just, I'm just.
He's old.
Yeah.
He's young.
Yeah.
It's, uh.
How long you off that?
They, they, they don't, they don't make it from there.
Oh, yeah.
What's happening, is this?
I bought that one, that last year. I should, I should. She had two of them, she was like, yeah, I should have got a few of them, yeah, I should have put. Were you?
Oh, perfect, yeah.
Yeah, we could, I put, I put them in there for them. I'm gonna buy a hell.
It's expensive, yeah, there's.
I had one, I hate to say it, a handball.
I never did. Oh, really? Oh.
Two hundred and fifty-five bucks. Had a handball.
She favors her mom.
I threw this, I got through it, it fall off, and that's why, I mean, well, we tell you, it's a kind of deal.
Yeah, probably get charged that way.
You fall off, I usually told you.
She goes, very long. Really?
I'm like, okay.
Huh. Fifty, oh, I'm old.
So, who could see it, I'm a little bobby though, I went to see him, bought one, bought the best one in there. You know, it made me financially turn my car, turn my sun, you need to put some battery car.
Yeah. It won't.
And hold, you got lots of chipmunks and stuff, and if you try to crank it, that's so long a time, it picks off.
Yeah.
You gotta wait like three minutes, four, three weeks, by then everything, you know.
Right.
I had nothing to talk.
That's right.
I bet he got wet.
Yeah.
I was just in gray last year, he's buying, he's like, they don't use it.
David King's got one, I don't remember what the name of it is. David King's got one, I don't remember what the name of it is, and, cause I, I was over there, I was trucking three weeks ago. His garage, and I said, I said, man, I said, how long have you had this battery charger? Cause I remember it when I was, they bought nineteen seventy-three, and it's had it since, and it works like a charm. Four jacks, he's got four jacks he bought thirty, thirty-five years ago. It worked, I ran it, and I said, I buy something, shit breaks them. Of course, and I like Craftsman tools, of course, now, well, Lowe's is carrying all Craftsman now, so, uh, I went down, Tina went down, uh, Sears. Three, three weeks ago, maybe four, and they had an extension set in there, like, uh, quarter, three-eighths dry ratchet, twenty piece, and sixty-eight ninety-nine. I looked online, it's twenty-six ninety-nine for the same thing. That's the manager, I said, owner of this price online, he says, you had it bought online, you should be, you can't lower the price.
See, Jesse just bought TV, Dave from Walmart.
It was the right place.
She found it online, it was a fifty-two inch TV, two hundred ninety-nine bucks.
Yeah.
She went to get it, it's, um, no, it's four ninety-nine, she went, four, it's a no, it's one ninety-nine. She come back through this afternoon, and then, oh, the lady was having, the lady was out, she said, come back here that noon, and had him sitting around the thing, she said, I want the two ninety-nine, they all the price.
Really?
So, like, I'm like, yeah, I'm gonna, you know?
But I should, I mean.
Of course, she said, she goes, I want it, she's like, I'm gonna get one without cost.
Yeah. A TV, when we lived in the house out there, with Walmart, a TV, and it wasn't a flat screen, it was one, get it home, we get it out of the box, sides busted out of it. And the box is fine, the box ain't smashed or nothing. And I told her, I said, I'm gonna have a, cause it was heavy, cause I take it back to Walmart, I said, sides busted out of the TV, and, uh, I said, we, we got another one back there. Well, he goes to get it all, or something, and I heard something, he dropped it. Busting screen on it. He said, I got one more, he said, will you help me load it up? Yeah. Once it dropped, they were heavy. I just, I just don't have good luck when I go buy something.
And I got sick, it went kaput.
Had a disafford that morning, so I would get there about two.
I tried it, it was, you know? Daughter, we got her, I had her downstairs. And we had a thirty-two inch, it took us thirty-five.
All the way around a bit.
I don't know about it, you know, so anyway.
That wore out young, that wore out young, man, I'm a lone and older person.
Tired was helping you, too, I heard, ever since.
I come here one day, I sit down my chair, I pick up my control, I pick the TV up, I don't want to call, I'm doing the TV.
Yeah.
Everybody just.
My damn laptop in the door.
I have a good thing, do you?
Were you doing, were you on the paper?
No, I was.
A big TV.
Oh, you're on the truck?
Yeah.
Well, you didn't do it.
No.
That was bad.
No, I have one once, well, I have, I need a little bit of strip, I don't. They like putting extensions up, it's hard to do.
Well, I told the one, it wasn't bad. That wasn't our TV. I'm like, why, cause that's our TV?
First year I hit.
Can't see that. We moved in.
And it was.
TV.
I would think so, spacing was real hard. Just make the older ones.
So, all I got to stand here, I said, where's my money to us? I didn't have a lot of business. I was like twenty-six minutes on each of you, like that, I do.
Yeah.
I got it, she's all about the, I'm like, I'm gonna go buy a TV.
That's funny.
She said, you want me to go with you? I said, nope. I said, I said, really, I got that, no idea. I said, oh, well, someday I'll talk to Walmart, I was hitting twenty-five years. Talk to Walmart, that fifty-seven inch TV, one fifty-four dollars. And we got the car out sometime.
Yeah.
I bought one, it's a, that was big. She, I was like, what, you're watching our TV? You were watching, maybe I'll watch it again, I'll watch that morning. You see, he gave you a sleep with Amy?
I got to the last fifty-four seconds, when I switched over from the, the daddy game and the R game, I had to watch.
They got, they got lucky.
I don't care, because it still does you.
That's it, it was you.
Yeah. I just like taking on that.
Oh, I guess that, that guy that was sitting on there, he was, he was, he was.
You know, a lot of people don't like Pittsburgh, I like my town, I do, I, I like, I guess.
I don't think he's had a bad job. He was a lot more emotional, um, yesterday, I like to see him be.
Yeah.
And be afraid of him yesterday. Yeah, Thursday night, he went to.
Yeah. A lot of my cousins, they're, do Facebook, I support stuff, she goes, uh, creepers there, and she keeps cutting in, she wants to watch The Biggest Loser on her phone, but all brings up the Cincinnati Bengals.
That's good.
Oh, shoot.
My sister has viewers, and I press, she went to Walmart, about, it was about ten years ago. Somebody approached her, started arguing with her, written on Walmart, cause she wore a jersey.
That's why Pittsburgh fans are.
Well, she, and she, uh, I mean, she, ten years ago, she would've done, but there always one, let me fix the fight with this little, one-year-old kid, and she was like, never again, we're wearing this stuff at Walmart.
Greg told me the other day, he said, they played Cincinnati here a few weeks ago, he said, it was the best game environment that he's been to ever.
Really?
To play each other, normally there's fights and brawls and cussing, ranting, ranting, he said, it was a good crowd, he said, you know, we had, everybody had a good time, so it was a real good, he said, it was the best environment for Pittsburgh, Cincinnati gave you everything.
We kept going for that reason.
That's what, that's what he said, cause it was just getting, it was just nasty while we were doing it, it was really nice.
He's mostly the furniture, I was gonna send the maidens to the cell.
No, I. She, yeah, yeah, she told me, I think she did.
Normally, if you see me out, I'm finding, and not the first, I have something to.
I thought she was going right now, I was gonna say, I was gonna say. She'll, she'll have a number, we'll go out to the car.
She'll go, yeah, that was my first. Jamie, Jamie won't wear herself out anymore. I would, I, she's here too. She, she, she's a little worse, I'm like, well, that's, I'm not gonna break that.
You two are saying, yeah, I'm not, I'm not. Whatever we meet, it'll be a little fake.
You wanna be like that, when you go with your mom.
Do it, yeah, you gotta take that away from it, bro.
You could definitely have fun with it, but.
One piece of cake, she only wanted to have the decoration on.
I thought it was my shot.
See, I, I couldn't handle it, and I, putting pure sugar in it. Do you have your meter box in already?
Fix your shoes later, now.
I did, no.
I didn't, yeah, on mine. You'd be happier with that.
Yeah. She had one, that's gonna be back soon.
She did. I don't know what kind of lights you're gonna put in it. But it's a mistake. I've got this high alumina fluorescents in mine, I can, if I had it to do over, if LEDs were available, when I did mine, that didn't happen like that, I would've put LEDs in second light. Man, they're so much brighter.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, I done bought a couple last time, but I had two, I bought one, I had one same. I think I just put, one of the boxes.
She's gonna eat anymore of them? Yeah.
That's what I bought, I mean, you run, you can buy them, and run them together.
Scraps. Right.
The boxes, I got the boxes, never run.
Anything, then, lunch, me, some scraps, that's what she, yeah. You'll be, you'll be happier with them. You're eating the scraps, that's what Jerry beats put in his garage. He had the lights I got in mine, and man, it's, like.
I'm like, I can't play it, get the walls in. I think the walls white.
Yeah.
And the clothes, they're little, they're bonded, I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Forcing that kind of sauce.
Are we all back? Okay, uh, so there was a motion made by Sarah, and seconded again, to matter of effective session, uh, no action was taken. Uh, we're back into regular session now. Your motion?
True, the jury.
Motion by Ron, or seconded by Carissa, all in favor? All right, next meeting is first, uh, first.